So, the board serves agreement?
You know, like. They have a choice. And if they say no, it's not as well. It's a loss to them.
I just want that board to vote on it.
Oh, my gosh, don't tell me. I know. I'm nervous. I know.
To ensure continuity.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Are we good?
Absolutely.
Good evening. This is the call to order our monthly trustee meeting at 6:30 PM. At this point in time, can we have a roll call? Trustee O'Keefe?
Certainly. Trustee Cox?
Here.
Trustee Fishman?
Here.
Trustee Nealon?
Here.
Trustee O'Keefe, here. Trustee Riddle?
Here.
Trustee Summer?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
At this time, we would like to review the draft of the January 17, 2023 regular board meeting minutes. Can we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I, okay, I move to approve the January, um, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
Seventeen.
The January 17, 2023 regular board meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, moved by trustee Fishman and seconded by trustee Nealon to approve the January 17, 2023 regular board meeting minutes. Can we have a roll call as presented?
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe, I need to abstain. Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
I abstain, I was not here.
Okay, we also.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. We also had a policy committee meeting, and at that point, we discussed the collection policy. And at this point, we would like to, and basically, our action was to bring forward the collection po- policy to the board meeting. And those members who were part of the committee may vote to approve the policy if there is a motion so forth. Those members are both trustee Nealon, O'Keefe, and McDonald. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the?
Of the policy minutes. I will move to approve the minutes of the policy committee meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, trustee Nealon has moved to approve the minutes from the January 30, 2023 policy committee meeting, and trustee Cox has seconded to move the me- committee meeting minutes as presented. Can we have a vote? Roll call, and I think we only need to call the three of us?
Four.
Four, including myself.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe, yes. Trustee McDonald?
Yes, and the motion passed unanimously. Okay, this is the time that we have for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to say something? And share some of their thoughts? Okay, being none, let's move on. Okay, first, we would like to then now have the treasures report, trustee Summer.
Right, um, good evening, everyone. Like in December, as indicated in the notes to the financial statements, the library received a large deposit of property taxes. Also noted in the investment activity, general funded interest and special reserve fund interest were fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirteen and seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, which was a significant increase from the same time last year. I also want to point out that, I'm sure you all noticed, that there was a $570 difference between the general fund interest in the notes and in the general fund interest in the financial statements. And that is actually due to the interest on the Rutherford trusts. So those will always be a little bit different. I'm sure you all are wondering. Also in the notes to the financial statement, I believe the general fund balance and the special reserve fund balance is not correct because I, I'm guessing that they used the prior months because the original documents included the December balance sheet. I think those numbers were used. So, in the minutes, we'll reflect the correct, which is the general fund balance as of the end of January is six million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And the special reserve fund balance is five hundred, five million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The special reserve fund balance difference isn't material, but the general fund balance is, difference is about four hundred thousand from what's presented in the notes. And like I said, I believe it's due to the December balance sheet reflected in the original documents. All right, um, as also noted, there was one special reserve fund purchase of the snow blower in the amount of twenty-one thousand, oh, thirteen fifty-five, paid to Burris Equipment. And in my review of the checks, I noticed there was another check to Burris for five thousand eighty-one dollars classified as ground maintenance. And I spoke to Director Austin about this, and after doing further, after he and the staff did further due diligence, they ended up buying a snow blower that fit, better fit their needs and was similar, but not exactly as the original one purchased. The second check related to an additional accessory for the snow blower. The board approved the purchase of a snow blower not to exceed twenty-four thousand, which the initial purchase of twenty-one thousand was below that amount. As the inclusion of the additional piece would exceeded the amount approved by the board, and there was room in the grounds maintenance budget for this purpose, the additional purchase was included on the other line item. And, let's see, my last comment is, in the financial statements presented in the board meeting in January, a profit and loss of all the accounts, as well as one for the general fund alone, was included. This one only included a profit and loss for the general fund. And it's, you look at the very top, it's just got two letters like GF only. I didn't catch this until yesterday afternoon, and I just would like to know if going forward, what the board members would like to see. Our new consultant can certainly put them together in any way that we would like, we just need to work, I'll just need to work with them. And then lastly, in the updated, most updated, and the, we also are getting a more detailed consolidated balance sheet. We're getting a more detailed balance sheet. Previously, we got it consolidated. So, we can, I'm not telling this for what, so you can either get a consolidate balance, consolidated balance sheet, which is just a small balance sheet, doesn't have a lot of detail, which is, the numbers are fine, or a very detailed one. I think it depends on what you all want. And you could get a profit and loss of the general fund only, or a profit and loss with all the accounts.
So you want to do a straw ballot and get a sense of what everybody wants?
Yes, just, yeah, just a hands raised, does anyone want to see a detailed balance sheet? Does anybody care?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
Sure yet either, right.
There's enough, there's enough interest, I would just say it's easy to do, so we'll just include it. It's, it's very easy to do.
Please note that three raised their hands.
Three raised their hand, three people raised.
In terms of interest.
And I would like to.
Four.
But I get it anyway. And then as far as the profit and loss statement, would you like to see one with just the general fund and all the funds, or just the general fund? So, and everyone that would like to see both, please raise their hand. And that would be everyone.
Okay.
Except Fina was thinking about it.
Yeah, I.
Yeah. But, so we'll.
I think more detail is better.
More detail is great, great, all right.
Okay, in terms of transparency.
Okay, so just to summarize, we'll get an expanded balance sheet, and then we'll get a profit and loss for the general fund and for the general fund and all the funds.
You might want to explain as to why we have a consultant when you mentioned it, so that the public knows.
I was about to do that.
I'll let Anthony go ahead and explain that.
All right, so.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thanks, Tracy. So, I think some of the aberrations that we're seeing here are due in part to something that we haven't talked about publicly, although the board is certainly aware. The library's finance manager announced just about a week or so after our last board meeting that he's accepted another position. In fact, last Wednesday was his final day with the library. So we had to make a pretty short turnaround time for a pretty critical role on our leadership team to try to find a way to bridge the gap between when he was leaving and obviously this meeting and getting everything prepared for you all to review. So we have a consultant, Sickich, who has historically provided audit services for the library, provides accounting services. They also do some other contractual options that we might consider in the future, but in any event, they offer accounting services. So, this is a rare opportunity for the library to be able to evaluate the way that we produce our, our bookkeeping, our regular accounting. Between three members of the staff, we are going to do a lot of the day-to-day operations. Marty, who's been helping us with a lot of the financials, is, is entering the P and L for us, so we can do our check runs on a, on a weekly basis. Mike and I are also taking a review over payroll with, with Marty as well, so we're absorbing a number of these responsibilities in-house. The bigger picture cyclical activities that take place on a monthly basis, as well as quarterly reporting, and obviously preparation for the, the budget cycle, other major financial steps that we take with the budget appropriation ordinance, if we get that far, the levy, obviously, anything else that we would be doing would be the services that would be provided by this, this consultant. So far, things have been working really well. She's going to come back and help us with month close for February, at the beginning of March. So the reports that we receive in March will be generated by our consultant. Her name is Laura, she's going to be doing her work primarily remotely, but when she comes in to do the month-end reconciliation of all of the balances and to do the close, she'll be doing that in-house here, at least for the first month or so. We have them on retainer for, kind of on an hourly basis for their services. I believe that we're going to be using their services through the close of this fiscal year, so I expect to have her here at least through July to get us through that period. And since she has been an auditor in the past as well, she'll be a great liaison to work with our new auditing firm, Vladeback and Amon. We did very intentionally segregate those things so that we could ensure that we were in compliance with our controls. So that's kind of the key, the key detail there. Does anyone have any questions about the way that we're kind of bridging this gap until we post again for our, our next step?
I just have a quick question. Are human, isn't payroll contracted out in terms of the actual process, or is it done internally?
So we have a payroll system that is a, a, a software-based system where we enter our time, but staff does have to key that data, and we have to verify the data. So it, it's a combination of being outsourced as well as managed.
Okay, any other questions?
Is this going to be any significant burden on, on you and the rest of the staff?
It's, it's a change, it certainly is a change, it's going to add some responsibility, for sure. As I said before, this is a, a unique opportunity for us. We've, haven't had an opportunity really to study it like this before. When John started, he started in February of 2020. In fact, he started just a week or so before we went into the pandemic. So he had a very unusual onboarding time. What we did have that time around is we had an announced retirement, so his immediate predecessor helped to cross-train him. And she also consulted her services for a period of time for us as well, and we could call her if we found an aberration, just to ensure continuity. He brought a lot of really great skills with him and offered some unique ways of looking at the reporting. The reporting has all changed. We had a great partnership with Tracy, there's a lot more information there than we've seen historically. We're going to continue to grow, obviously, with what you all requested this evening. We can produce those results, you know, as soon as the next meeting. We're looking forward, I think there's, there's a lot of opportunity for us here. But we do want to study it because this is, as I said before, this is a leadership position that, that hasn't been vacated quite like this before, and we want to take the time to study it, and we have the time to do so right now with the services that are in hand.
Any other questions? Okay, can we have a motion to approve the bills and salaries?
I will motion to approve the bills and salary statements.
Check detail for January?
What, what, sorry. Oh, I move to approve the salary. Check detail for January 2023 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by trustee Nealon and seconded by trustee Fishman to approve, approval of the bills and salary check detail for January 2023 as presented. Can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe, yes. Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes. The motion passed unanimously, seven to Zippo.
I should have asked any questions.
Huh? Are there any questions?
Yeah, we should have asked, but I don't, I would have assumed people would have already asked.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we are going to talk about the policy committee recommendations, and all, even though the committee is made up of four members, all the trustees, but one were present, and we had two of the candidates that were present. So we had a pretty good and robust, as well as some lead members, so it was a pretty robust discussion. And so what I'd like to do is, based on that meeting, the changes, here's some of the changes that have occurred in the interim. The appendix 3B ALA Code of Ethics, there was an addition, which is point number nine, and we last approved it June 15, 2021, but since this time, we need to re-adopt it. And basically, what it has, what they've added is point number nine, we affirm the inherent dignity and rights of every person. We work to recognize and dismantle systemic and individual biases, to confront inequity and oppression, to enhance diversity and inclusion, and to advance racial and social justice in our libraries, communities, profession, and associations through awareness, advocacy, education, collaboration, services, and allocation of resources and spaces. If you notice, we have five appendices, and they're based on the, you have the ALA Code of Ethics, four, really. The ALA Freedom to Read Statement, the ALA Freedom to View Statement, and the ALA Statements on Labeling and Rating Systems. Those are appendices and policies that guide us. We do not, we cannot change those because they're from the American Library Association, so get that over with in terms of, we, we, and we've adopted most of them at some point in time. Basic changes from what we had discussed, and one of the big things, and I don't remember when we reviewed the policy, the collections policy, and from now on, it's to be reviewed every two years per state statute. But one of the guiding principles and one of the bigger change, biggest changes we've got is, if you look in the third paragraph, 7-1, "The library and the board resolve to protect the right to freely access information and resources from censorship and book banning, and seek to provide our community the opportunity to read and access information freely as guaranteed by the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States." And all of the trustees that were present supported that. Other changes that were made since we had that discussion was, basically, in 7-10, we added the first paragraph to be consistent with what was introduced in 7-1. Also, on page eight, in section C and E, we had clarification of timely form to, in a timely form, to include within 60 days of referral to the board and 60 days of receipt, so that it's a little bit more definitive. And then the final addition that was implemented was basically that, in terms of the resource, Wilmette Public Library Resource Reconsideration Form, the name and contact information of the organization, if an individual wants to protest formally in a written format from an organization of the book, so that we know who that organization is and can identify it. But before we proceed with any other discussion, I'd like for Director Austin to talk a little bit about the process that he went through in making these changes.
Thank you. So this was an unusual collection policy review this time around. What is usually a very procedural task for us as an organization, really invited a deeper dive as we started to scratch the surface of this. A lot of this was motivated by our attention to the rise in book challenges that are going on around the country right now. The American Library Association has an Office of Intellectual Freedom, and as you know, through the statements that we were just talking about previously, ALA has taken a very strong position about ensuring access to content, that our professional ethics resist efforts to suppress access to information specifically through censorship and the banning of books. Because there has been a rise of this in our country, the ALA Office of Intellectual Freedom has been tracking this data for the last 20 years, so in this century, we have been analyzing efforts to suppress information. And as we discussed at last week's Diversity in Publishing meeting that we were at, it was reported that in school libraries especially, that there has been quite a rise in partisan challenges towards materials in the curriculum and the collections in, in school libraries, amounting to nearly 2,000 titles being challenged in a, the single year last year, which is a staggering amount of items to be called forth for being banned. Now, as you know, through the policy that we have set forth here and what we've had in place for a number of years, there is an awful lot of criteria that our professional librarians go through to review materials that end up on our shelves. There is something in this library for everyone, we serve everyone in our community, and that means that there may be resources here that may not be of interest to a number of folks, including those of us in this room. But we defend the right of anyone in our community to access all of those materials, and those are the ethics by which we stand for as libraries. So in the face of the, this rise in challenges, we took a closer look at our policy this time around because we knew that while we have not faced a formal book challenge before this body, that we know that that could very well be an occasion, and so we wanted to test our policy, we wanted to test our procedures, we wanted to review our practices to ensure that we are operating free of bias and that we provide access to our collections freely, and that we have a process that is transparent for anyone who wishes to have us further review those items in our collection. So in order to do that, we reviewed our current policy. We then went through and followed all of our local procedures and practices. We also went through all of the margin notes that we have on our policy, so in the time between when we review these policies, we're always taking notes. There's things that we want to add, correct, change, et cetera, so when the process comes, we have those notes. There were a few of those. Then we also continued our review of industry trends, we were looking at those media reports, we were noticing even locally that there were some organizations in our area who had been facing material challenges, and we saw how that reached the national stage in the media. And a lot of that had to do with the policies and procedures that guided the way that that, that the collection challenges could be handled. So that was a signal to us to look at the way that we phrase our policies. That then gave me the occasion to go through and review policies of a number of organizations. We looked at the policies of every library that borders Wilmette Library, we looked at the policies of our public schools, we looked at policies of other libraries that are statistically comparative to us, so in looking at, say, the LJ survey that came out concurrent with this, we looked at our peer group there. We also looked at, at a cross-section of some of the model libraries that we aspire to be like. In addition to that, I also took a dive and looked at all the organizations that we're associated with, so I looked at the Illinois State Library and the way that they guide collection standards. You may recall that we've gone through and reviewed our collection standards here before this committee previously. The Illinois Library Association has made a number of statements, as has the Illinois Public Library Annual Report, the IPLR, and per capita grant application have referenced this to our collection, and I wanted to ensure that our policies were reflective of that. We also have relationships with, with other resource partners, including the Cooperative Computer Services Consortium, CCS, as well as the Reaching Across Illinois Library System Rails, and we also collect, uh, uh, collection records for all of our items as registered through the Online Computer Library Center, OCLC, that's how we catalog and make accessible our collections, so we wanted to ensure that we were in compliance with that. We also looked at the Local Illinois Library Act, as well as the compiled statutes, wherein it does say that we do need to review this policy biennially. So we're doing that here. And as we mentioned earlier, I also took a deep dive with the American Library Association and the resources provided by the Public Libraries Association, PLA. With all of that information in hand, we then set about crafting the language and revising the content of the policy that is presented here before you. One that, once that was complete, I presented that policy to the leadership team to review it with that, with that group first. With some edits that we made there, I reviewed it specifically with the collection librarians. We went through and did a review of that last month. It also passed review with our, with our legal counsel, because all of our policies go through that process as well. It was also mentioned by our attorney, and I did share this with you all, that the policies that were set forth by the American Library Association, UKBAT, have also been reviewed by their own legal counsel. So even in adopting these statements, there is a legal test that goes through on these statements that we're adopting, as is verbatim, as they were presented by ALA. We had a very thorough process that we went through to review all of this. In this room, at the end of January, I met with all of our collection librarians and managers, anyone who, who has interfaced with the collection, and we talked about this policy. We, we discussed a number of individual cases and how we would handle the policy. And with that group's review, and actually with a lot of support from that team, who were very satisfied with the content that I think that they saw on the policy, we then met in this room again just a few days later on January 30th for that policy committee meeting with those minutes we just approved, wherein we conducted this, the thorough review of, of this policy. I believe that is kind of the, the content that I wanted to share with you. I would add one other point that concurrent with this policy review, there was a change in leadership at the state level, at the state library. You may recall that former Secretary of State Jesse White was also known as the State Librarian, that's one of the titles that, that you have when you're the Secretary of State. There was a transfer of power back in November, and Alexi Gianoulis came in, and they have established some new priorities in their comprehensive transitional team report, which directly relate to libraries. And one of the statements that they made, and I'm going to read this aloud because I think it's important, "The state librarian secretary of state has prioritized the following for Illinois libraries. They are championing access to diverse and inclusive information by equitably distributing library resources, activating more collaborative partnerships, and supporting freedom of thought. This includes narrowing the digital divide through improved accessibility of eBooks and online education resources, in addition to strengthening the collaboration between the three library systems, the Illinois Library Association, Reaching Across Illinois Library System, and the Illinois Heartland Library System." So I think that we have broad support both at the state level, as well as from the organizations that we partner with in presenting the policies that you've seen before you this evening. Do you all have any questions or comments about the collection management policy materials?
I do, my first comment is bravo to you and your staff. The comparative research and, and getting to your peers, I think is an excellent, it's an excellent manner in which you're keeping, you know, current and, and supportive of, I think of all, all readers in our state, so thank you, bravo. I wanted to ask if you found any of the peers to have any, well, as comprehensive of a policy, any best practices, or, or did you find them to kind of be also maybe on that path of working towards a, a similar, you know, policy, as comprehensive as we have?
I think specifically in our region, here in northern Illinois, the quality of the policies is exceptional. I think a lot of them look very similar to what you're seeing this evening. I would say that the reference to the First Amendment is not a common reference, and it's one that I'm actually really excited to see in our policy this evening. But overall, I think this is the position that all libraries in Illinois have taken, yes?
I'd love to hear that.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Also, I know that there was a brief discussion while we were reviewing it in terms of the evaluation and maintenance of collection of the criteria, and just want to know, they look at all of that criteria, and it's not in any type of order or preference. So that's just all of the variables. That was another point of discussion, so at this.
The bullet-pointed lists are in alphabetical order.
Yeah. So at this point in time, can we have a motion to approve of the updates to the policy manual?
I move approval of the updates to the policy manual, including Appendix 3B ALA Code of Ethics, Policy 7, Collection Management, Appendix 7A, ALA Freedom to Read, Freedom to Read Statement, Appendix 7B, ALA Freedom to View Statement, Appendix 7C, ALA Statements on Labeling and Rating Systems, and finally, Appendix 7D, Resource Reconsideration Form Rating Systems, and finally, Appendix 7D, Resource Reconsideration Form as Presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Okay.
The policy has been moved by Trustee Summer and seconded by Trustee O'Keefe. Is there any discussion, additional discussion or comments that you'd like to make?
I just feel very confident that a really thorough job, careful review has been done, and I also think it's great to say bravo, so.
Any other discussion? Also, I like the four-step process that's in there in terms of reviewing books that people protest. So it's clear, and I think the staff understand it, so it should be easy to communicate and execute. Can we have any other discussion?
I do have a question too. Good point, Lisa, Trustee McDonald. The staff, have there been in-service to the staff on the four steps that had been outlined? And the staff feels confident that they're ready for any kind of protests that have come along?
Challenge is the word, yes. And yes, I believe that that was part of that, I don't know, three-hour meeting that we had in here on January 27th, where we went through verbatim this entire policy and tested it through a number of ways. Yes. Yeah, everyone that was at that meeting feels comfortable.
At the comfort level is the challenge.
Thank you, yes.
Any other discussion?
Well, the idea of the, you know, the form and everything, I think I want to note that sometimes these, you know, forms and, you know, so-called challenges could be very benign. Like, for instance, we mentioned, like, if a physician finds that there's something that is very out of date, and even though we do like a really thorough job of keeping everything up to date, but like, it's not all defensive. It's also something that could possibly improve the collection as well.
It's true. It's not all just about material that may be potentially offensive to someone. There could be items in the medical, legal collection, the travel collection, things that are just, you know, meet the regular criteria for maintenance but haven't been maintained. Someone may find that and bring it to our attention, and that could be also part of that review process. Yes.
Any other comments? Given that it's been moved and seconded, can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes. Thank you. At this time, we will move to the Director's Report.
Okay.
Oh, but let me make one more comment. There will be three, all our policies are up to date. However, I think after April, there will be three more policies that will be new that you will be working on. Do you want to just comment on that briefly?
Sure. So, and I don't have these right in front of me at the moment, but there are three additional policies that we'll be working on this summer. We'll be going through our HR policy, which is our employee manual. We're going to be compiling that document into a policy format. It historically has not been in this kind of chapter verse format that we're using with our policies today, so we're going to go through that process. I mentioned margin notes earlier. That's one manual that has a lot of margin notes, so we've got a lot to update there. And we also have a digital services policy that's entirely new to us, so that's going to be getting a review. We'll be doing that further down the road, as well as a review of our privacy policy, which is a procedure that we have in place, but I want to articulate it more formally in policy. So we'll be addressing that further down the line, likely after the fall. Our goal is to complete this comprehensive review of the policy manual by this time next year. We should have everything done at that point.
Thank you.
And then we can start over again.
Have fun. This time, you had the Director's Report.
Okay, all right. I've got a lot of notes in front of me, and I'll try to sail through these things, so I've got room for, you know, your questions at the end as well. So I'll kind of briefly go chronologically through the report, or, you know, from start to finish here. So I am thrilled to report, and related to the collections, that we have some new merchandising standards. Our shelving and welcome desk manager, Patsy DeVono, has been working on this project for a while. So we've got some new merchandising standards, which are guidelines that will help with the presentation of our collections, to make them more attractive, accessible, and a better way of presenting our collections for folks. So you'll be noticing some of those changes around the library. We've already begun shifting some collections. Accessibility is one of the very first places where we're starting, so getting things that are out of people's reach, whether it's down at their feet or up above their heads, trying to get things more accessible and visible. In order to do that, shifting is involved. We need to go through our regular collection maintenance to make room for these items. We're also trying to present the items in the stacks a little bit more in an attractive way, like you would find at, say, a bookstore. So we're getting more bookiesels to do more displays in the stacks, to help talk materials there, to present collections, because we know that actually the covers of materials sell the materials a lot better than just the spines of the books. You'll also see those merchandising standards used in displays throughout the library as well. So be on the lookout for the ways that the collection is being presented here, as we're making some changes there. In terms of collection maintenance, we're also evaluating usage, and we're completing some cyclical tasks. So we're going through our collection HQ software to review usage statistics as we're working on this merchandising standards project, trying to identify areas where maybe the collection has been a bit more stagnant, and find ways to refresh it, add new materials, take things out that aren't being used as much. Part of that process is also, as I said, cyclical, so we retain a certain timeframe of our print periodicals, for example, and that was one of the tasks that was completed at the beginning of the year. We purge the previous year's worth of periodicals. We've also been evaluating our eresources and planning ahead for the next budget cycle. You'll note that in Digital Services Manager Lauren Kelly's reports, that they've been reporting statistics, including a cost-per-use analysis on a number of those databases. Knowing that we've got a renewal cycle coming up soon, we're taking a closer look at those resources and trying to determine which ones are the greatest value. We did sunset one of our resources, which was a literary criticism resource that just isn't being used by the public. Maybe it's more of an academic resource that just isn't as applicable to our services. So there's a reasonable amount of savings that we've accomplished by electing not to renew that, so we can experiment with some other resources that we think might be of greater use. So we'll continue that study. Speaking of eresources, we did note that January had one of our strongest performing months on Canopy. We had 1,000 checkouts on Canopy, which is pretty outstanding when you factor that we had 2,000 circulations for our DVD collection. So that's definitely a real signal towards a tipping point. How many of you use Canopy? Canopies are really, it's a really great product, right? I mean, there's a lot of really cool movies on there, and I think that it really is specific to the interests of this community. There's a lot of really quality stuff on there. So, for example, the entire Criterion Collection is on there, so if you're a film buff or you're looking for, you know, a good foreign film, it's a great place to look. But there's wonderful documentaries on there as well. So anyway, we're really excited to see that performance. Canopy is one of those services that is always available. There's no waiting. So, you know, you can add it to your smart TV. There's an app for it. You can cast it to your TV at home really easily. If you need help with that, we're here to help you. So check out Canopy. I would also mention, in that same breath, that while 1,000 isn't really going to tip everything, the 2,000 for the circulation of the DVDs is getting low. DVD media is kind of on the long tail. Physical media like that, we're starting to refer to as legacy media. I've been noticing that a number of our peer libraries are starting to slowly weed back a lot of their disc media, whether it's in the form of audiobooks. I don't know if you folks check out audiobooks, maybe you do it digitally, but, you know, the days of checking out a 40 CD set are slowly waning, as folks are finding that overdrive and other such services can do it much easier than that. That said, there is still demand for it here. Even though DVDs still account for just 8% of our circulation, they're still very much a popular service, and if you are a streamer at home, you know that there are many things that you cannot find on your streaming service, and that those titles can be fickle, that the relationships and licensing can change over time, and that a movie that you might have access to one month, you might not have access to the following month, and who else can provide that resource to you but your local library? So we're not looking to do away with our DVD collection, but we are looking at the shelf space that we're allocating towards that relative to the total circulation in the collection. So the media room definitely takes up a large portion of our first floor, and is a high-impact space with a little bit lower rate of return. All right. All of that said, overdrive, its usage was up 15% in January over the previous month, which is a remarkable bump. Overdrive performance is really strong right now. Also, on the digital realm, our website traffic was up markedly, up by 24% from the previous month. It wasn't any one particular page that drew that attention, it just was kind of across the board. We have more book lists up there, the Winter Reading Program, maybe people were going to check out logs, the event calendar and registration pages were there, we posted our annual report. So there were probably a number of things that drew additional attention to it, but nothing in particular really drove that. We're just seeing more traffic on our website and on our app. Magazines account for 6% of the circulation in overdrive and 1% of the circulation overall in our print circulation. But not all magazines are checked out. So when we're talking about, like, analyzing the collection, you might look at that periodical room and say, well, gee, that's not an awful lot of return with 1% of the usage coming off of that space, but it's a destination. It's a quiet space. It's kind of a sacred space for a lot of folks who come to read the newspaper and magazines in there. So there are variables when we're analyzing that in the collection. On the circulation side of things, on February 10th, we officially launched the 24/7 lockers in the parking lot. We'll have more statistical data about that at our March meeting, as we're only just two weeks in, but so far, anecdotally, we've gotten really positive feedback from the folks that have used it so far. Have any of you used the 24/7 lock?
I have. Right, right. I've used it successfully twice, but it's a little bit of a learning curve, just that when you, just an example, when you go to scan your library card, I was putting it too close, so it didn't quite scan. So there's just a few user, getting used to it, that the user needs to become accustomed to.
Can you use your digital card?
Yes, you can.
Absolutely. Yeah. So the staff is very supportive when I had to go back in and ask them to help me. But it's very convenient, and it really is easy to use, I think, everyone. And once you get used to it, there is a QR code there if you have some questions. I think it's going to be fabulous. So I'm delighted to have it.
Great. So like I said, I'll share more about that with you specifically at the March meeting. We welcomed 100 new cardholders as part of our D39 partnership, so new students joining District 39 were able to register for library cards and did so in January, so welcome aboard. Speaking of new services, our checkout stations, which are the biblioteca self-checkout stations that we have scattered throughout the library, currently account for 58% of our circulation. So that's pretty remarkable. A lot of folks are taking advantage of that self-service option. Overwhelmingly, 68% of those checkouts take place on the second floor in youth services. Kids love to do it themselves, so, and it's fun to watch them do it. So anyway, but we're seeing a lot of usage of those checkout stations. Another great stat this month, 82% of registered cardholders in Wilmette have used the library in the past 12 months. That's really an outstanding number. That is a number that I think any library in the nation would be proud of, so we're really excited about that. And January circulation was our strongest month since February of 2020. We are on trend with our past circulation. We have finally kind of gotten over the hump of the COVID era, so we're thrilled about that. In fact, I met someone here at the library today, and they said that they've never seen the building so busy before. It was really busy today, but really no busier than it has been on any other given day, but to see that many people in the building might be surprising to some folks who aren't here regularly, so we're excited about that, too. We have a number of updates coming for our Local History and Genealogy section, including we recently added a new, did I leave my water over there by chance?
I left it by the hand sanitizer.
Okay, thank you. We added a new microfilm scanner. You may say, "Microfilm, Anthony, gee, that's old-fashioned technology in light of everything else that you're talking about here." Well, actually, this new, thank you so much, Marty. This new microfilm scanner is really high-tech. Believe it or not, a lot of the newspapers that have been scanned over the years are still really only available through microfilm. And a lot of ours here at Wilmette Library, including our local history collection, is still on microfilm and needs to be digitized. And we'll talk about that at a future meeting, where we are going to move to digitize all of this to try to preserve it, because microfilm does degrade over time. But this new system can convert anything on microfilm to PDF, so if there's articles that patrons are looking for, they can convert it to PDF, they can print it, they can have it saved to a device. And the software that we added to it this time has text recognition, so OCR. So that's something that is not inherent in like a microfilm reel, where you're trying to find an article, but once you find it and scan it, it will have the OCR. So we're really excited to be able to offer that for our researchers, and a lot of folks do take advantage of that particular microfilm scanner. So that is behind the reference desk upstairs, and is part of a project that Eva Ann Johnson and Michael Pacernich worked on. All right. Our Winter Reading Club is in full effect right now and goes through the end of February, and I'll give you a full report about that in the March meeting, but I'm told that so far, our statistics are really trending really strongly. Winter reading is not nearly as strong as our summer reading program. We're trying to turn that around and make it more popular, and it looks like this year we are doing a little bit more than we have in years past. We're really happy, again, to be able to present this program with our supporting partners, the Friends of the Wilmette Library. So thank you, Friends, for your continued support of this program.
Anthony, can I just add? I completed the Winter Reading Club, and so the prize now was a cart that we have here of all books that the bookstore has fulfilled. And I was there on a Sunday, and there were, I was looking at it, it took maybe a little longer than I thought, because there's so many books to look at, and then there were two or three or four people who I heard at the desk inquiring about it. So it's popular, and there's a wide variety that they've offered, so it's nice. It's great.
We love to reward reading with free books, so. All right. Let's see. We have a new initiative that launched in January. Our Youth Services Librarian, Sarah Jo Zaharaco, is responsible for the launch of our Let's Learn Together program. We've got these wonderful flyers that are in youth services right now. This is an all-ages program that is organized around challenging topics and trying to find ways to address challenging topics with your family. Our first initiative is racial literacy, and so we put this program together. I invite you to take a look at our website to learn more about it. The program on this first page says, "Race shouldn't matter, but it does. Let's Learn Together is a practical framework for how to talk about race with your kids." This booklet is yours to keep after you return your kit. There are kits that you can check out. You're encouraged to engage with the materials here, and you can learn more on our website at wilmetlibrary.info/learn-together. This is just the first phase of our Let's Learn Together program. We'll be tackling other topics as we go forward with this. It's been a very busy programming month for us here in January, and we had lots of drop-in programs as well. One of, a couple of our really successful programs this past month included our School Engagement Librarian, Eddy Berland, hosted the Illinois Library Presents program with Kwame Alexander. We had very high attendance. This was presented to 210 libraries statewide, and we were the number-three library in terms of attendance, so given our population size, we were really proud of that. And in my report, you'll see a page that was produced by Illinois Library Presents about the feedback that we received for our facilitator. Eddy did a fantastic job on that program and is getting accolades for that. A couple other programs that were popular, we had an armchair travel program that was virtual that attracted 65 attendees, which is pretty outstanding. That was about shipwrecks of the Great Lakes, and we had 85 patrons in this room for a Pete Seeger sing-along. So that's pretty awesome. Let's see, we're getting outstanding outcomes and feedback from our programs from Digital and Maker Services. outcomes and feedback from our programs from Digital and Maker Services. And I'm really thrilled to announce tonight, it's in our agenda, but I'll mention it to you all here, that our annual One Book Everyone Reads Community Reading Series returns this spring. And I'm proud to announce that our title this spring is Kevin Wilson's Now Is Not The Time to Panic. Kevin Wilson will be in conversation with radio personality Allison Cuddy here online on Wednesday, May 11. And this program, as you know, is generously sponsored by the Friends of the Willmet Library. So that's coming up this spring. We'll have more information for you as the program series unfolds, and it will be as part of our spring newsletter, which should be in homes here soon. So other activities for January, and I'm almost done. We published our 2022 Year in Review, both digitally and in print. We produced a website that was dedicated to Black History Month and included a list of our library events, our book lists, history and resources from our partners. And also to supplement our in-building displays, the Village of Willmet had a series of programs that they were offering in support of Black History Month as well and did promotion of our events, too. Speaking of the Village, today I met with our new Village Sustainability Coordinator, and we discussed our current initiatives, our position on sustainability, and some plans that we have going forward. I'm really looking forward to working with them. We're still very much at the very fledgling stages of this project right now, but I will certainly be cluing you in a little bit more as we move forward. But we're really excited and think that there's tremendous potential for us here. Speaking of facilities, yesterday I met with our consultants from Inverg Anderson, our architecture firm, as well as Imeg, the engineering firm that worked with us on our past project for the electrical project, to begin researching and planning for our building automation system, the BAS project that we've been talking about for a while. So I'll give you some more updates about that as we move forward. We also talked a bit more about that generator replacement that I mentioned at last month's meeting, and I found out that the lead time on a generator today is almost a year. So hopefully, we don't need a generator anytime soon. Not that it's offline completely, but it certainly needs to be updated. So we'll be sharing more information with you about this generator spec soon. But there was some information in my report about that as well. We're also doing a research about the shed in the back. It's just not enough to accommodate our needs. You may recall that when we talked about this at budget time last year, we said that we were going to come up with a plan for how we could enhance that space and maybe address how we handle our dumpsters, our trash, and the way that we just kind of coordinate any of the outdoor stuff on the grounds related to grounds maintenance. We've got some ideas about that for the spring. So I'll keep you posted as we move forward on that. The last thing I wanted to mention are some HR-related details. So I'm really pleased to announce that our Maker Librarian, Janet Peel, has relocated from our Youth Services Department to our newly branded Digital and Maker Services Department. So many of the programs that we have been offering through digital services really affiliate with the Maker series that we've been doing. It's really a change in name primarily. Janet is really doing a lot of the same programming that she's been doing all along. We just now have an infrastructure to better support the programs that we're doing with Maker. So we're thrilled to offer that. And we have a new full-time facilities technician who's going to be starting next Monday. So some additional support for facilities. We've been without that position now for a few months. We welcomed two part-time shelvers this past month. And another promotion, our acquisitions assistant, Shanti DeCosta, is now our TS Manager, Technical Services Manager. So we're really thrilled about that promotion as well. Those are kind of the key highlights from my report. Do you all have any questions or comments from the stuff that I've just shared with you?
Did you go to the jazz thing, Joan?
I did. I did. Friday night.
It was well attended?
Well attended, yes. Not standing room only. Friday night, there was a jazz trio, and they were really quite good. It was a lot of fun. Forty, 35, 40 people.
So since the Maker has changed their name, are they going to do more adult Maker programs?
We have had adult Maker programs, and yes.
They get filled quick.
We will offer more. We certainly will.
Thank you.
Other, other stuff? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Communication from the comment box, the one that was with the child in terms of that.
Sorry, I didn't circulate these here. We got a few comments.
Yeah, you've got that. And then one of the things, which was interesting, that one of the patrons had sent me a note, and I called him, and it was regarding the categorization. And I told him that he wanted all foreign films, you know, foreign material.
DVD collection, yeah.
DVD. But also, I think, in terms of books and everything else, sort of like that, listed to Niles and Skokie, I think, as models for what he liked. But one of the things I told him is that we are doing the... We hopefully will pass the collection policy, which we did, and that we will be reassessing everything. So that stood there. But thank you. So we're passing it around. Okay, the annual ILA legislative meetup is not 101 for legislators. Will be held via Zoom this Monday at 10:00 AM. There's still time for you to sign up. If you would like to go, let Director Austin know. He will be representing us at this point in time. And then in terms of four seats on the seven-member WPLD Board of Trustees will be on the local ballot for Tuesday, April 4, 2023 Consolidated Elections. All seats will be for a full four-year term expiring April 2027. There are four candidates for the four seats in the order received. Joan Fishman, Renee Cox, who are currently serving on the board, and Carolyn Sennett, and Maria Di Lorenzo, who are in the audience. So looking forward to the election there. And also, I think, Anthony, we will be in election...
We will be a polling place for the first time in as long as we can remember. So Central School has historically served as a... Has served four precincts and was unable to serve this year. So Cook County started, you know, walking around the village, trying to find other entities to take up the mantle. And we're going to use this space here in the auditorium on Election Day to host two of those precincts here. We will be here before 5:00 AM to welcome everyone in, to get the election judges in here and get set up so that we're ready to go at 6:00 AM when the polls open. So...
That's great.
Yep, we're excited.
And I skipped three committee report updates. So trustee Nealon, do you have anything to tell us about the ILA to share?
Other than the programs that were mentioned, I do have some intergovernmental information.
What's the Rails update? Do you have anything to add for Rails update? And then we'll go to that next.
The Rails update that I'll share is that Rails has officially announced their new director is Monica Harris. Monica Harris served as the interim director of Rails after Deidre Brennan had retired. Monica's been in an assistant associate director capacity there for several years. She's a former library director as well. And I think that she's going to be a great fit in that leadership capacity. So we're thrilled to have Monica.
Now, the intergovernmental?
Oh, right.
Cooperation Committee?
The next intergovernmental meeting, as far as we know right now, it should be pretty clear, but we haven't received ultimate confirmation, is March time at 5:00 PM. The place is to be determined. And the committee leaders, Kate Jaya, has been doing research and feels strongly that the topic, which is mental illness, could span over the year. So because there's many... I'm sure she could talk about it tons more eloquently than I can, but there's a lot that has been done and a lot that could be done. So she's proposing meetings like every quarter, on June 1st, September 7th, and December 7th. And I am... You know, Marianne and I are not the only people who have to go to these meetings. Anybody we all could attend if we found... We've got select representatives and just like switch on and off depending on how our interest and our time. The public is generally invited, but trustee Jaya, village trustee Jaya is finding some representatives from mental health organizations to join and, you know, some people from the schools to join as well. So that's what I know.
Thank you.
And we'll confirm the meeting dates.
I will add that one of the other topics that we are looking at for this group, as this is an intergovernmental group, is we're recognizing that with the Consolidated Election this spring, that we're going to be onboarding a number of new trustees. And we're looking at maybe a village-wide consultant who could do an onboarding meeting before trustees are officially sworn in. So that, you know, there's a lot of Open Meetings Act-type detail that needs to be taken place there, if we can find a way to get everyone oriented together about, you know, any things basic as Robert rules or just, you know, how we do business, the culture of being an elected official, et cetera, Open Meetings Act, freedom of information, et cetera. We're going to try to coordinate an event for everyone who's on that ballot to get that training. So we'll keep you posted as that moves forward. But that's one of our objectives, too.
But isn't intergovernmental meeting limited to two trustees based on the Open Meetings Act? I think...
Oh, in this... Yeah, in terms of representatives?
I'm talking about just in terms of attendance. I'm just curious.
I think trustee Jaya is interested in more representation if you want to... You know, she really says like the entire public is invited to like this first meeting in March. But I mean, I don't think she's going to put out a call for people, but it's an open, an open meeting.
So you could go as yourself, not as a... Would that be tricky if you went as yourself and not as a board member? Is that what you're kind of...
That's what I'm thinking. I don't know if that falls within there, because I know that's why there were only two representatives. I know when we've had meetings, there've only been two representatives from each of the groups when we used to post that meeting here. So I don't know.
I think, you know, I could clarify that, but do have that note. But I'll, you know, I'll clarify.
And then the only other thing I have to add is that in the... At the April meeting after the elections, we will... I will appoint a nomination committee for the offices for when the new trustees and the new body convene in May.
Okay. Any other new business?
I don't know if it's this word. I'm not going to be here in March, and trustee O'Keefe will be doing the financial, I will... Financial presentation.
And trustee Fishman will also be acting as the convener, because I will be out of town.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to that the board adjourn this meeting at 7:31.
1.
1. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. It's been moved by trustee Fishman and seconded by trustee Summer that we adjourn the meeting at 7:31. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you.